I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
And before we get any further along, there are three items to be removed from the agenda. The first one being under personnel. Fifth item down, Pro Shop, seasonal job attended by Jessica Rich. That's being removed. The next one is the approval of contract 2015-8 for the grant writer. That's being removed. And on the back, under new business, the fifth item down, discussion of rates at Evans' Plunge. That will be removed. So we have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Need a motion to approve the council minutes from the regular meeting of November 17th. We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Under the claims, bills in between of $128,379.07. Need a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion by Carol Anne and a second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Current claims, $185,351.29. Need a motion to approve? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I got some, Carl. For Simon Contractors, we're going to approve a change order, but we are voting to pay them this change order in the current claims. And I'm not sure what the big amount of the change was for. I haven't had a chance to talk to Tracy. So I'd like to make a motion that we pay them the original contract price until I can talk to Tracy to see what the change order is.
Should we just...
There's a summary in your council.
Yeah, I read the summary.
What page is that on?
Quite happy with that.
Two.
Page two, three quarters of the way down the page.
Okay, we'll change that back to $57,000 and...
I'll second his motion.
And shall we table the... or take the other item off?
Table the change order.
Table the change order? And that's on under new business? So we've got a motion to approve with the removal of the change order amount of $9,182.70.
Can we just table that because we already approved the agenda? We can't take anything off now. Can we just table that part?
Well, that's what I thought we'd do, table.
We already approved.
We just want to table the...
Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion while you can?
Table the bill.
Table the current claims.
Well, when we get back here to the change order, we can just table it right here. Motion to approve change order.
Yeah, but the entire amount is in the current claims.
I thought he was going to pay Simon Contractors $57,000.
That's what I thought. Paying the original contract price, table the change order.
So you're...
$9,000.
I have another discussion. I have the half taxes for... on the last page.
We still have to go over the discussion. So you're what now?
On the half taxes for all of the county treasurer. Last item number.
I can explain that. It's property taxes for the fund. They can't pay property taxes forward, so at our settlement, we were credited $18,190 by the seller. We couldn't pay it at the time then. It's doable now.
Okay, that's not bad, but it needs to be documented. It just says one half of property. First one half of taxes.
Yeah, I think it's longer. We can put more notes in there than you can see.
It chops off so much. We can put in on the bills.
And we have the property taxes.
It's on our purchase order. We looked at it. One thing.
Any other discussion? We have no further discussion. We have a motion and a second to pay the $185,351.29 minus the change order number, number one for Simon, and table that. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Communications from the public. Tom Ackerman.
Good evening. I'm here to speak to you about the memorial events that we discussed when I gave you the the results of our of the wall last year and the fact that honoring our heroes is going to work on memorials for walkway. We have three separate issues I want to bring to you for consideration in voting next week. The first one is, the first year we put in the brick project, which is on the walkway at the American Legion, which enhanced the mural that was already there. Thank you city for allowing us to do that. The second year, we put in the wooden plaque. That was last year. It's a cross of American Legion and Centennial Park. Part of it's not finished, it's being finished. That's what I'd like to discuss, if I may, right now at this moment. We'd like to have that permanently installed. By that, if you look at it, it's in a teeter totter, I mean a sawhorse type of affair that is secured to... We would like you to secure it where it is. If not, then we will move it over onto the American Legion side and secure it there. I'm asking you if the city would like to have that permanently mounted over there on that side of the street. Because everybody will want to talk to it.
Right at the end of Centennial Park?
Yes.
Right across from the American Legion?
We'd like it to stay there, but I'd like to have two posts put in. Permanent posts into the ground and then mount it up there like it is. I will tell you that a lot of people stop and look at it. I think it enhances Centennial Park, but that's my first comment to the... from honoring our heroes to you. I'd like you to consider that for voting next week. Put it on the agenda.
I only got one question, but I want to talk to Gerald and those guys with the parks, the crafts department, make sure that it isn't going to hamper them anywhere. So that's my only concern. And we're going to have a meeting Wednesday so we can kind of hash that out, if you would, please, okay?
Then we can have it as an item on the agenda at the next meeting.
No, I think we have the cost to do it.
And then the second thing I'd like to discuss with you. Originally, there was a plan for the walkway. I believe it was probably approved by the city council way back when on different locations for different type monuments on the walkway, or so I understand this to be true. I would like a copy of that because at present, we're working with to put together some sandstone and marble.
Like some statues?
No, no, that's not. Sandstone and marble plaques annotating different eras of battle along the walkway. What the design it would bring to you, but if I could have that, your original plan, because if, as I understand it, every so many feet, it was going to be so many years, and there would be a marker for that war. I haven't seen the plan or liked the city plan.
Yeah, I think it's down at City Hall. I have seen it.
If we could get that, we'd like to work with that and come back to you with a couple. We'd like to put in a couple, one or two at least, sandstone and marble plaques along the walkway.
I think you'll have to visit with Tracy who was concerned with that.
And then the third item, and I'm going to put that on the next council and come in and talk to you about it.
Okay.
Third item, and I'll stop here. We have taken on a great challenge. We want to put together a bronze statue, lifestyle statue, to go on the walkway. We considered this statue should be of Lieutenant Charles Russell. Lieutenant Charles Russell is the Medal of Honor winner who's buried on the hill up here at our National Center. He was in a battle... he's from New York. He was in the battle in 1864, the Battle of North Annie River in Virginia. He was awarded the Medal of Honor for capturing the Confederate flag of... of the 42nd Virginia Infantry. We're going to work to gather the funds to commission a life-size bronze statue, being that this is the Veterans' Day. Being that Hot Springs is where the Civil War veterans came to. Lieutenant Russell was a painter before he died at the Sisters Hospital here in Hot Springs. And he is the only Medal of Honor winner that we have buried here. I thought of statue because we can get a statue. We know what he looks like, what unit he's with. So we'd like to put that statue somewhere on the walkway. Again, for your consideration. So I want you to take that into consideration. We figure it's going to cost about $50,000 to put this together. That can probably make it happen.
That's a big undertaking.
We undertake a lot of things.
I know you do.
We've always accomplished what we undertake.
And we appreciate that.
So I think that would be a very fitting first statue for Hot Springs, just due to the nature of Hot Springs and who we are and what we are today. So I would like to enter into discussion with the city on where you would like to have that, et cetera. If not, I could always put it in the Legion, but that would not be my preference. I would like it on the walkway somewhere. But again, it would take the city. We need to talk about how high you would like it off the ground, et cetera, things like that, where we could live. So I would like to bring that to the council. Will you consider at the next meeting, I'll run together maybe a drawing of what we'd like to do because he lost two fingers in that battle and he captured the flag, so I thought it would be appropriate. Probably not going to be a Confederate flag. It would be a flag of that unit. He could have him holding his hand with the rifle, his uniform, and I think that would be really the beginning of our Freedom Walkway. So I'd like to bring that to the council with consideration.
Well, I would request that you talk with Tracy Bashken with regard to what size the base would be, how tall it would be, and at some point on the Freedom Walkway that would be appropriate. So and then we can bring it to the next meeting and have further discussion with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communication from the public? Moving on, if you look under personnel, there are several items that give consideration to. Those are all informational items. And being that it is two minutes till hearing time, I'll look at one item. Under old business, the table item recommendation. What motion are you talking about?
The word says motion to approve Frank Star and Mark Mills from Park Town Lifes to full-time building maintenance.
I would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Motion to approve the transfer of Jonathan Wishard from part-time street department to animal control officer on a salary of $21,650 annually effective January 1, 2015. That is because David Green is resigning effective December 31. I need a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
We don't know if this is going to need to be a contract or just a regular city employee. I ask that Carol review the four contracts we have for our contract employees to see if it's advisable to change the way we think.
I think she did. She did talk to her lawyer.
No, I did talk today. I just talked to her today. She's going to have to look at the contract.
So are you...
I'm not objecting to the point, but I just, could we maybe table this and vote on it at the middle of the month so we don't then?
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Have a motion to table that and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes.
Yes.
True opposed. Now we'll go on to the hearing. The motion did pass.
We've got another motion. You need to restand it. Your motion.
No, not when you do the table. We have a public hearing at 7:20 for a use permit on review. Home occupation, Lori Manning, 2509 Washington Avenue.
I'm Lori Manning, and I just want to put a salon in our garage. We're not in front of our garage. I have been driving back and forth to Shatter now for almost two years. I owned my salon in Shatter for 10 years now. Been very successful. I just want a vehicle with my family. We have two small children, and just simply, I just want to not be driving with my children on the road anymore.
So you're going to be reconstructing your garage?
Just a small portion of it, yeah.
To put in your salon?
Yeah.
And Scott, do you have a comment with regard to that?
Yes.
How it has to be done?
From everything I've seen, I haven't heard anything from the public, any phone calls or anything linked into this. And I would recommend this be approved on the condition that it starts within six months as the ordinance states, and a building permit be taken out for the project.
Can that be done?
Yes.
You'll take out a building permit and start construction within six months?
Yes. I really would like to be actually open before six months, so.
This is a public hearing, so if we have any other further comments with regard to it? Hearing no further comments, I'll close the hearing. And now we need to...
Make a motion to allow this?
We have a motion to approve the use permit on review and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Let's go to old business, a recommendation from the building inspector to accept Spitzer proposal of $44,970 to demolish the building at 315 North River Street, the old Community Action Building.
So another motion under personnel?
No, that was taken off.
Oh.
The grant writer was taken off.
I'm sorry.
So Scott, would you speak to what we were discussing here at the table with regard to the money? We have 30,000?
About $34,000 left in this year's budget. This is a $44,970 bid. Misty was talking to the state as far as how we can do this, and I was conversing with Spitzer, who made the bid. And if half of the work is done in 2014, we can pay out of the 2014 budget, and then half of the work out in 2015, we can pay out of that budget then. And so it is doable as far as splitting the cost that way, and it would still be my recommendation to accept this and get that thing on the ground with the government.
Okay. So it's a recommendation of the building inspector to go ahead with this contract at Do I have a motion to accept that? Have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Yes. Is he going to haul the stuff out to landfill or is city trucks going to sit down there on the street?
He's going to stockpile. He's going to take it down by hand, stockpile it, and then the truck, the city will provide a truck, and he's going to load it, and then the city will transport it.
Who's going to do traffic control?
It's handwork. There shouldn't be any traffic control, probably pedestrian control just while they're carrying it to the truck.
Is part of this contract to finish Ortner's building like we promised Ortner we do?
Through the agreement, yes.
Spencer's going to do that for us, part of this money here?
Yes.
The top and bottom of their building?
That's what he said.
In writing.
You bet. You bet in writing.
Because we were told at one time he was just going to take the building down. He wasn't going to provide stamp wall or the kind of the false wall to talk... I don't remember what it was. I just remember there were some...
He was given a bid spec book with all the specifications of what's required for the project, and he bid that project. And this is the number that came in, and through the conversations that I've had with him and Tracy has had with him, that's the project that he bid on.
Does anybody remember how much our fees were in Edgemont for the locker property? It's still like knowing how much it's going to cost us because, you know, if it's $44,000, this is all we're going to have to pay. We're going to have to pay landfill fees, we're going to have to pay our employees, we're going to have to pay diesel. It doesn't, wouldn't it just be $44,000?
Right, well, that's... we know that. That's why he gave two different bids. One of them was $87,000. I don't have that one.
It says $87,675.
Right, and that would be him doing all the transport. And...
And paying the fees? Because basic sentence can cost 47,000 dollars to transfer.
Yes.
And the dump fee.
Well, to be quite frank, he doesn't want to do that, and that's why he upped the price on the... on the end of he's going to have to do all the transport. He gave a pretty hefty bid on that. I know we can do it for less. I had penciled it out, but I know we can do it for less, so that's why my recommendation is take the low bid and we transport.
Yes, we talked to Mike about this, and that was why it was table last meeting by the member right this...
Right, because unfortunately, the mayor isn't here. She's the one that asked me to get ahold of Mike Ortner, and I did. And she talked to Mike also, and he was still good. He said the signed agreement is still valid for what we're going to do, you know, his responsibilities and our responsibilities, so it's in writing.
I'd like to see in writing that this is start to finish everything we're talking about, demolition, building the new wall, everything.
It is, that's the contract.
It doesn't say that here. If this is the contract, that is very vague.
Don't say nothing about building the wall.
That's what the project is that he did. That's in the...
Bid specs?
Bid specs. It's all in the bid specs.
Can I make a comment on that? Your first bid specs that you sent out is a whole different bid specs than your second one there. Your first one required all that stuff to be dried in over at Mike Ortner's and all that stuff. And when I got the second bid sheet on there, it does not, it does not state all that on your second deal there, so I think you probably really ought to check into that and see what's going on there because I think there, if they were still the same bid, the same specs on what you're doing at Mike Ortner's building on the second one as it was the first one, the wording is not in there.
That part has remained the same.
Okay.
There isn't another way to do this. Do you want to table this and bring it to the next meeting?
I'd make a motion to table if we find out for sure.
Then we run out of time if you're... I just want to bring that in as part of the perspective. You have a very little bit of time to get half the work done in a...
Yeah, but we don't want to take it in the shorts of the longer.
Yeah, I understand that.
We're talking about taxpayers' money, not all of them.
Well, the last time, I do remember at the last meeting when you wanted to table this, I did ask specifically if the minutes could reflect what you wanted to meet, what information you wanted me to get, and so...
I'd like to see the contract as a full definition of order.
Scott, I asked Brian if that was going to be to build the walls for Ortner's and stuff, and he said no.
He said no?
Yes.
That's what the contract was. He told me yes, so I guess you guys do need to table it and talk to Brian.
I'd like to see it get torn down too.
Maybe we have to get together a hold of it.
Well, we're going to have another meeting next week.
Seventeenth. Two weeks.
I just think we need to clarify that point, what happens with Ortner's wall.
Let's table it till the 10th.
I've never seen the bid specs either.
I haven't either. They've been at City Hall, okay.
Well, we have blocks down there for this stuff.
Well, I have a motion to table it till the 10th. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to table this till the 10th of December. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Motion to approve the wage increase for Debbie Romi of $1, Scott Seminar $0.50, Barb Benson and Mary Hardy $0.25 each, effective October 11th. Carol Anne? I have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention. Thank you. Motion carried. Motion to approve James Lively Street's status from part-time to full-time. Motion to approve James Lively's street's status from part-time to full-time August eleventh at twelve eighty-five per hour. Do I have a motion?
Full move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Motion to approve hiring Jason Warford, full-time police officer, September eighth at sixteen eighty-seven an hour. Do I have a motion?
Full move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Motion to approve hiring Ginger Evans, full-time Evans Plunge Assistant Facility Director at thirteen eighty-five, effective July twenty-one, two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
And I'll second it. All in favor?
What happened to the other assistant? We've been operating the joint one?
We didn't have an assistant.
We didn't have an assistant?
Since July twenty-first.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Motion to approve hiring Rachel Devilla, full-time library clerk, effective August fourth, two thousand fourteen, at ten fifteen an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Discuss.
Discussion.
I'm curious why we're backdating all these. Didn't we approve these earlier?
No, they were never voted on. These items are never gonna do you...
We said yes, but we didn't make a motion.
No, they were never voted on.
We didn't do them.
Never voted on.
Nope. Never even discussed them.
They were just listed.
They were going down by the...
This makes it great and everybody's out there.
This makes it legal. That's the key word, legal.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. New business. Motion to approve the following applications for renewal of two thousand fifteen liquor and wine licenses for the American Legion, Boulder Falls State USA, CS Inc., Wigger Circle, HS Vault, Jimmy's Recreation, Lynn's Dakota Mart, Fresh Start, Sunny Superfoods, Southern Hills Pro Shop, Guindia Holdings LLC, and Woolies Western Grill. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Sorry.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Approval of plat combining...
Can I ask a question on the liquor license?
It's a little bit late to be doing that. Go ahead. They're all listed.
The BFW. They haven't applied for a license in over a year.
Not on the list either.
Don't it... After a year or the two years, it reverts back to say... If they don't apply for it?
I think it's two years.
We need to check on that.
I think Mary did check. And there's possible situation going on.
I'm not sure that they're gonna reopen.
I mean, we could sell wives and something. Okay, sorry.
Thank you for bringing that up. We're gonna be looking at an approval of plat combining track B and lot four B dash twenty-nine dash twenty-four on the back nine subdivision.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of the plat approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. On the... On your new business, there's depot events and I don't...
That's me.
That's you? Okay.
We've never seen a rate structure, I guess. I guess I'm assuming that these people are gonna pay something to use the depot. I started thinking about it after they came to us and told us they were gonna use it. I guess, can anybody tell me that?
I have a question about that too.
We charge ten dollars for something to use like Trystine Park.
It's gonna be heated and everything, so...
The only thing is, we're trying to make the Mueller Center kind of a little more productive and pay for itself. So if we're letting... I hope we're not just letting people schedule their events for free down there. Because if we are, it's kinda hard to make our Mueller Center feasible if we're giving away...
Also maybe a list of events would be good too.
So I'll see if there's an ad in the paper where you can set your meetings and stuff up.
And who was doing it? Do you recall?
Two.
A lady almost there. The... No. No. It kinda hit me afterwards and I started making this thing. So I guess, can we ask for more information or... I think we need to charge. You got on the list.
I'll do that. I think those are great questions.
It is a good question, although we've already given her authority to...
We can bring it in.
We can always add to it.
She was decorating it last year, right?
Yes. So can that be done through your office, Lynn?
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Can you let us know by the tenth?
Hello?
Thank you.
We're gonna... I need a motion to table this change order number one for silent contractors.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. The next item was removed from the agenda. Next item is employee passes to Evans Plunge. Mr. Romy.
Yes. Corey, did the mayor ask us to do something about this? Now, nobody ever told me I was supposed to do anything about that. I think...
We had talked about it, I think, in personnel.
Nobody ever said that I was supposed to do that.
I don't think we did. I think it was...
I thought the mayor told us. The ladies in office.
I checked on it.
I was the one that was supposed to do something.
Oh, I checked on it too. We had four employees that used it for membership this last year.
Well, we have employees come to us and say, well, is it for everybody or just police department? Other employees? I was gonna use it. And we had no answer for them. Either we give everybody passes, just employees, no families, or we don't let nobody do it free.
Well, and then there's...
I'm gonna make a motion of that tonight.
Well, can I talk to you about it just a minute first?
Okay.
We talked about it because we have employees that work down there.
It don't matter.
I know, I understand that.
Shouldn't we give a motion and a second and then discussion?
We have a motion.
I'm hearing.
What's your motion?
To not let any city employees use that free unless they all do. And no family member, just employees.
I have a motion and a second. Need further discussion?
Okay, here's where it all stemmed from. We have people that are using the golf course that work there. We have people that are using the plunge that work there. We don't have people getting free sewer or free water that work there. It was to be more equal. So we're gonna try and do this under our personnel. So to me...
The golf courses, that's for me. I mean, if the plunge can't do it, the golf course won't do it. I'll put that on the agenda next time.
And that's what we're working on right now? And we can talk about it probably on the tenth, because this is something that's gonna go on the personnel.
Well, you know, I've been at this asking questions for over two months now. So people's had a chance to redo this and come talk to and counsel about it.
Yeah, I've talked to them too. I've talked to each one of these places. And their employees do use it. If they get lifeguard certification, they have to use the plunge.
Well, you know, on their job, I don't care if they use the plunge for their job, to get lifeguard certification.
What I'm saying though is it should be equal to everybody. And you don't get free sewer. You don't get free water if you work in those places.
Street shop don't get to use their shop for you to hoist and stuff. They can't do it.
As far as we know, they don't.
They ain't close to it. They totally not.
So what we're trying to do is make it more equitable to everybody.
Well, that's my motion until somebody comes forth or something. I get stopped until they do.
Yeah, which part are you stopping?
People using the plunge free, unless everybody does.
And the people that work there?
Anybody. I don't care if it's employees or why. It ain't right, same with golf course. I'm sorry about that. It isn't right for certain employees to get to use these things and not the other employees.
And that's what we were discussing.
And that's just what my motion is. Either they all get to use the plunge or nobody does.
Or the golf course.
Or the golf course. That is nonsense, so I can't say that.
No, this is...
Mike can next meeting.
So I would ask if you wouldn't mind tableing that until the tenth.
I think the public's here right now. Very few people come on these in-between meetings. And there are people here right now. So I'd like to see that.
I guess, I'm gonna say, you think the whole family should get the membership?
I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying we should discuss it for our personnel.
Well, at this point, it sounds like...
Because there are things that you are taxed for if you get benefits.
What?
You can be taxed for benefits.
I realize that, but they aren't. None of them are being taxed at this point. This is just basically free benefit.
That's why I said it needs to be discussable in detail. So if you wouldn't mind, I'd appreciate it if you table until the tenth.
Is that a motion?
Well, I'll resend my motion. Table that till the tenth. But I want it on the tenth agenda. And the golf course.
Okay. Discussion ended?
Okay. Three seconds.
Okay. Do you have a motion to table and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, the next one is motion for council to receive copies of applications and resumes for all applicants applying for new positions and full-time positions. And council reserves the right to be a part of the interview process.
I'm good to me. I'll make the motion. I'll make the one here, but...
I have a problem with that.
Give me the motion in a second before we have a discussion.
I have a motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay, discussion.
I have a problem with some of this going out, because anything we receive, it goes to the public. Now, do you want everybody's application going out to the public?
And their resumes.
And their resumes.
Why do you need to go out to the public?
Because that's the way the law's written. You have the right to go in and look at any of this.
Is the motion for the council to just receive copies of something?
That's right.
The newspaper gets it too. Any personnel?
Why?
I'd like to see that law. I'd like to see that, because that...
If you hand me a paper at City Hall where they put things in my little folder down there, everybody doesn't get what you stinking having on.
No.
You're asking for all of it to go.
You're talking about personnel. Personnel is not privy to the public.
Exactly.
This is an HR, Human Resources program. And as I understand it, and I haven't clarified it yet with the league, the municipal league, but I believe it's the mayor's authority to do hattering and firing. And to include... And to include the council when she makes her decision on who she wants to hire.
It's with council approvals.
I say to include the council when she's made her decision to hire.
If someone gives you a job and has to look through, you can't give that to the public.
That's exactly what this is saying.
We don't want that happening. And with resumes coming in to City Hall and going out, there's an overabundance of ways for that information to get out to the public.
I know.
And that's not the public's domain.
I hate to differ with you, but she put two delta committees together to help pick employees before she did. And there was...
Members of the council. And she...
That was before she made the decision.
She chose members of the council to be on those committees.
So people, the council can know before she picks them.
That's correct. But that's at her discretion is to choose those committees and choose those members of the council to be on them.
There's a resolution, and I've read it to you all before, that states that we... I'll bring it next time or I'll bring it on the tenth. It says that the council is a part of it and is a consenting part to any hattering of the employees.
There's a difference. And I did give the municipal league packet for information on open meeting laws. It says under very few circumstances, we are authorized, but we must hold these in executive or closed meetings. And it has a list of five of them there.
I'm talking about a city resolution.
I'm gonna make a motion that we table this until the December tenth meeting.
Well, I think you need to talk to our attorneys, what I say.
I've got a motion to table. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second. Now...
You cannot discuss a tabled motion.
No.
You can't.
That's right.
By her seconding it, that kills all discussion.
Good. I'm glad you said that. All in favor of tabling this item until December tenth?
Somebody has to know how the meeting's running.
All in favor of this motion to table until the tenth? Please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Three. Motion carried. Carol Ann. Discussion on city attorney attending meetings. Carol Ann.
Obviously, we could use some help here. She could be here on... So you don't pay her hourly. She could be paid a monthly fee. I'm not sure how like what it's called.
It's called a retainer fee, and we don't have one with her.
Okay, I'm saying it is possible to do that. And I just think it might be advisable. We're making a lot of mistakes around this table. And it might be advisable to have her here for maybe six months. And then if it's six months, if we, you know, don't feel like we need her here. But there are a lot of people in this town that think we deserve getting here.
Or at least have her read each one of our agendas and highlight things and like just give us...
She only gets the agenda, and she doesn't get what's in our package. So she really can't do anything to help us. It's just a thought I would like the council to think about that.
I just think we're capable of running our own things. And if we do have a legal opinion, yes, have her here. But I think we're fully capable of running our own.
I'm gonna ask Kurt.
Yeah. By him.
Any further discussion?
It's an expense that we didn't really budget for Carol Ann.
Well, lawsuits are expensive.
We're building, so we didn't budget for that. So we're good at that. Right?
Any further discussion?
It was just on for discussion.
That's right. I wanna move on to the next item.
I'd like to bring you back to... I'm not gonna put it on our middle meeting, but on the next red pillar, city council, you can make a motion and we can go on.
Next item. Authorize the purchase of a used Toro Brown's Master, ten thousand nine hundred dollars for the golf course. Jason.
Okay, we have in our two thousand fifteen budget fifty thousand dollars for equipment. I came across this huge piece of equipment that looked pretty good. It has roughly seventeen hundred hours on it. It's a diesel, so we expect it to get somewhere around four thousand before any significant trade-in. It's a what we call a surrounds mower. It gets around greens and trees. Gets pretty steep banks, like banks that are up at like forty-five degree angles. It's kind of a specialty mower. It's got special striping mechanisms on it that you don't see really in the parks or anything else. But it's designed specifically for golf courses. I found one down in Denver. I found one down, uh, down in Denver, so I think it would be a great addition, help solve some of the problems that we have with, uh, with keeping our, kind of, kind of, uh, in check.
Are they gonna hold it till?
Yep, yep.
That was my question, you said 2015 budget?
Yeah, it wouldn't be delivered until probably sometime in March, because it has a ninety-day warranty on it to make sure we're, we like it, because I haven't seen it or anything like that, I don't wanna see photos of it. But it should be completely serviced, gone through, this is one of my dealers that's pretty reputable. I trust the salesman that I talked to, so, uh, and like I say, if it's something that we didn't think we got or what we expected, we just, um, put it on it, so we got ninety days for that.
Do you need a motion, Rob?
I, I would like one, yeah.
Oh, like, can I discuss that? I'm sorry, I don't know whether to-
A motion, so you can make a motion. Motion.
I have a motion and a second, discussion?
If it's your 2015 budget, you shouldn't motion to spend any money from that budget this year.
He's not buying it, so just don't make a motion this year?
I'm just making that a discussion item. If he's spending money in 2015, you shouldn't be saying you have permission in December 2014 to spend that 2015 money.
We need to bring this type for first meeting in January. I'll resend that motion.
See in January.
It's in, it's in your budget, right?
In the 2015 budget, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You rescind your second?
I don't think so.
Just have him put it on the agenda for the first meeting in January, we can just make the motion, I'll present it to him.
Will that hold it for you, or you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The motion has been rescinded, and so has the second. And thank you for the information, I'm bringing it back to us on the first meeting in January. See you then? Thanks, sir. Committee reports, the administrative, uh, committee did not meet, but we will on the tenth of December. Public works, Dwight Quinian.
Uh, we met with Southern Hills Water, we had, uh, four people from Southern Hills Water, and, uh, we're kind of doing a reset of negotiations with them, with the new mayor, and, uh, nothing concrete, but we're talking. Uh, we discussed the screw press for the sludge dewatering at the sewer plant, because I guess the FAA told us absolutely no sludge application at the airport.
Four years ago.
Four years.
Has Tracy talked to landowners about flying, or?
Tracy was not in meetings. Be a good question for the next meeting, though. And we discussed, uh, our snow removal policy. We had some calls that, uh, it snowed Saturday and Sunday, and we were not cleaning the steep hills off at all, so we're, we're gonna review our, our snow removal policy the next meeting. Uh, we talked about the easement at Hot Brook, and the gate is still locked out there. Uh, and we gotta get that straightened out, because that's supposed to be open to the public. Uh, and better enforcement of the citywide cleanup days, as far as certain people dumping only two loads. That's it.
Spin dock is here.
Oh, the spin dock is here. The new spin dock.
Thank you, Dwight.
We did talk about that, seventeen dollars and fifty cents, and that brought that up.
Oh, the vacant water services?
Yeah.
Yep. We did talk about it again.
Thank you, Corey.
No problem.
Uh, code and ordinance, we had one additional complaint made since the last report, and that had to do with, uh, Johnny Flight, and I understand we're on a sixty-day hold for him, so there wasn't anything done with it. Parks and Recreation gives vacation west grimes.
We didn't have a meeting, we are gonna have a meeting the third of this month, uh, three o'clock, City Hall.
Wednesday, three o'clock, City Hall, day after tomorrow. Thank you. Public safety, we don't have anybody here. Enterprise advocate, Georgia Holmes.
Um, I'm not with, um, Cindy at the library, and she will have the library closed on December sixth for software upgrade, because they can't, uh, check in or out any of the books. December tenth is an anniversary for John, for Don Johnson, seventh book anniversary. They had an elementary Lego day on Monday, coming up Monday, December twenty-ninth, and then one for the teens on December thirtieth, and a family day on December thirty-first. They won a grant, only twenty-five libraries, um, received these Legos, and ours was one of them. Cindy and Rachel received, or attended workshop on conflict and resolution on November twenty-first, and that might be something we might be interested in for some of our employees. Talked with Jason, um, on the twenty-fifth, and he gave his report on the mower, and the irrigation, did, everything was taken care of, blown out or the wind rise. We did talk about contract versus salary. The architect talked, has, um, I think the first of December I have down there for that, is that right?
Tentatively eighteenth, we still haven't finalized.
Eighteenth, okay. You're supposed to return and give us some information on that. Uh, the cameras are in use out there? And there's an open house, is that right?
Yeah, we're just trying to, for the eighteenth, for the open house meeting for the architect.
Okay, for the eighteenth?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question, golf courses, RFPs for that restaurant deal, are those done, or the?
Cindy had that, she was working on that, I don't know.
She hasn't brought it back to us again.
They had the advertisement for the full-time maintenance manager, and the twelfth, they're supposed to be interviews, is that right?
After, yeah, the, the application deadline is December twelfth, and then afterwards, we'll be doing interviews.
Okay. And-
I have a question, I'm gonna ask you. What is that, what position are you advertising for?
Equipment manager.
Is that a, on a, a position that we already have?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think, the reason I'm asking, because I see the application that says manager and mechanic.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's equipment manager, so they're in charge of not only, you know, doing the fixing. I mean, they don't necessarily have to be doing the fixing, they're just in charge of everything, equipment shop-related, so I mean, it's, uh, if they want to-
But this is a position that exists already?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, then I did meet with the airport, and FAA came out, and you guys both went to that, didn't you?
Yeah.
And they said that was a real good meeting, they got a lot of information, a lot of things settled, probably that needed to be put down on paper, that happened to be ignored. Um, they were re, looking at readdressing the hangar prices. Uh, there's a lot of stuff going on with different airports in the area, and we'd like to look at changing some of our prices and, uh, post some of that, bring it to the council. And Gary Romey had these cows out there till November seventh, and we sold hay, um, two thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars, and the cows were twelve thousand dollars, I guess, and some of that needed to be reevaluated. FAA talked about it, is that right?
We didn't sell the cows, did we?
No, we didn't. We just left them be there.
You can't plant sand grass or whatever.
So there was an issue about cows away from being out there. Um, we questioned the taxes that are on the hangar, and the county has taxes they collect for those, and maybe we could get some snow removal from the county or something for, out at the airport. Um, they're looking at putting in some new tee hangars, and the prices, and some information on that we received. The sign for the outside of the airport was budgeted at a thousand dollars. I think they're going to get, getting that taken care of. Um, the plunge, we talked, I talked with Theodore, and he gave us a real good report here, and there's a lot of activities going on, I don't know if you want to talk about what you've got planned for this month?
Um, sure. Uh, we have a couple of specials going for, do you want me to stand up?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. Um, we got a couple of things going on at the plunge, we have, um, several events and specials. The first event is going to be on December twelfth, it's gonna be men's night, um, kind of the counterpart to ladies' night that we had a month and a half ago. Uh, we're gonna have, the pool's gonna be open to the general public during that. The event is gonna be from seven to nine, we're gonna be open an hour later, we're only men are allowed to go in and swim. Um, for ladies' night, we closed one hour early, and it was only ladies, and there were a lot of, um, upset people from the community, so we adjusted it, so it's still gonna be open regular hours for everybody, open an hour later. And then the other event that we're gonna be having is the ugly sweater potluck gift exchange. You can say that five times fast, but, um, that's pretty much exactly what it says. You're, the potluck people are ugly sweaters, they bring a gift, well, that's under ten dollars, pre-wrapped, and, um, it's just a community event, there is no admission, it won't cost us anything to do, but it gives the community something to do, and brings people together, and, uh, brings awareness to the plunge. And also for the, um, specials that we're gonna be doing, um, we're doing sixty percent off everything in the gift shop, excluding swimsuits, and then, um, we're also doing thirty percent off, um, six-month and annual memberships to mirror the, um, membership drive that the city did when it first bought Evans Plunge, and that had a lot of success.
Thank you, Theodore.
Thank you.
What about a jump into the water? You got a seventeen or something?
A polar plunge?
Yep.
Um, there's been a lot of people who wanted us to do a polar plunge in the outdoor pool. We don't have a date set, because we're still trying to get everything worked out, like, um, with the tar blocking the outdoor pool, but that, that is something that we want to do as a potential fundraiser and event, and it, it would be nice, because those type of events happen a lot, and we fortunately have hot tubs, uh, not too far away, so.
Very, very good advertising for hot springs, something like that. Good idea. I don't know whose idea, but it's a good idea.
Thanks, Peter.
We are also gonna put it on YouTube, we're holy, right, Theodore? So it gets publicity everywhere for the plunge, that we have a polar plunge where the water is warm. And they can sit outside in their bathrooms and do it, like, we were talking about it today, right?
Yes.
And some can go in the water, and some can be sitting out and having drinks, maybe? Kind of a great-
It's still in planning.
You never know what's gonna happen in a polar plunge.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, next item, we don't have an administrator, but please notice that our administrator begins on the seventeenth of this month, a new employee. Now, Misty, our finance officer, do you have anything?
Um, no, I really don't have anything, I'm just getting more and more acclimated every day, and available to answer specific questions, but don't have anything general to share. And since I'm talking, I should just say, it looks appreciated, or from Demi, who's been a great resource for me, as I'm learning to answer all of your various questions, so.
You didn't have any training, right?
Uh, we had, like, four hours, four hours of diving training, yeah, but that was great.
So far.
So far.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Misty. And being no further, I would undertake a motion to adjourn. I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carried.